What he said he would.
We were good? Okay, please stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Strike, would you start out the new year for us with a prayer?
Better. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather today to do the business of the county as we've been appointed to do. We ask your guidance and blessing on all that's said and done, and if the thoughts and the plans of the year might be fruitful, and pray these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we will call the Hampshire County Commission meeting to order, our first meeting of the year, January 2nd, 2024. And nobody in the room here today, but I'll welcome anybody that's with us online.
Minutes? Oh, okay.
And we don't have any minutes for this?
No, I'd ask to look at them next week.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll move right on along then to the nomination and election of our offices of President and Vice President for the upcoming year of 2024. I've spoken with the both commissioners, and I've served two years as President, and I believe Commissioner Cannon is willing to take on that responsibility for the upcoming year, so I would nominate Commissioner David Cannon for Commission President for 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You accept that nomination?
I do, thank you, Commissioner.
We will take that to a vote then. Commissioner David Cannon's been nominated, moved and seconded that he serve as President for 2024. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, so I'll switch your seats there. Sir.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. It's an honor. Serve you both.
You did a good job. You did a good job.
Now that we have a President, do I hear a nomination for Vice President of the County Commission?
Yeah, I'll nominate Brian Agnager.
I accept. You accept? I have a motion on the floor, and I'll second the motion to elect Brian Agnager Vice President of the Hampshire County Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, if there's no further discussion, gentlemen, we can move on to the President and Commissioners' reports. I did have several, well, let's see here. I see committee assignments are a little bit later. I didn't want to move on too quickly. I did attend a planning commission meeting, just to give you, gentlemen, a pretty much probably the biggest record month maybe in county history, thirty-six million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars last month in construction. Of course, we know the cost of construction, you know, that could be several houses nowadays. But the main point being the solar farm, and we collected seventy-two thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars in permit fees. So, not to delve into that any more deeper than we already have, gentlemen, we've talked at length about the solar farm. I did meet with Ben Fisher from Rev Renewables, and it's Rev Renewables, not Energix, that secured a permit. And I believe I spoke with Commissioner Agnager a little bit about this. More or less, he just wanted to meet to answer my several questions that I had. And stormwater, you know, I had phone calls about there being mud in the road, and so I did ask him what they plan to do with the stormwater. And they definitely, in their process, have secured the proper permitting and detention ponds, that they have a basin for runoff. So, in regards to the road, I'm not sure what's going on there, but I reached out to Ben Fisher as soon as I heard complaints from the public, and he assured me that he would call the contractor immediately and remedy the road situation. They have secured all their decommissioning bonds from the Public Service Commission. The Public Service Commission has issued their solar siting certificate, and they must have a third-party evaluation on the decommissioning of that property. The public had a lot of concern about, you know, that farm deteriorating over the years and just being left to the people to take care of. And they don't just get to analyze their own solar farm and just come up with some arbitrary number to which they would have to pay to decommission. It is a third-party agency, so I did verify that. And it must be complete within twelve months, their project. They claim that they plan to be finished by June, July. These are just a fixed solar panel, they're not the ones that are motorized and tilt. And I do remember the planning commission being that there's not a plethora of jobs, you know, maybe fifteen to twenty when it's being assembled. But after that, it's mainly the landscaping and a lot of grass mowing. And Brian Edwards did get them to say that they would use local people for the landscaping contract, which, you know, we try to do our best to encourage people to buy local. Let's see here, it'll be a twenty-megawatt system. And the other concern was that, you know, a lot of this energy would be just sent down the road to DC or somewhere else, and that the local county here wouldn't benefit from the power. Well, that's not true. It's being tied into the distribution system, not the transport system. I'm not a power line electrician, but he did explain to me that if there was a major cold surge or something of that nature, that a lot of that power would be distributed there locally in Augusta where we could benefit from it or would benefit from it. And any other, if I missed anything, gentlemen, and you want me to, I've got a fairly decent relationship with Mr. Fisher. I'd be happy to ask him any more questions. Decommissioning was the big thing, and then there's stormwater runoff and the mud in the road. And they definitely jumped through all the hoops, and we can't really do much more to hold our feet to the fire, so to speak. I attended the, oh, the other thing was a salvage yard update. We have issued correspondence with Mr. Asbury with his alleged illegal salvage yard in Augusta. A lot of complaints from that area, that mill, a lot of unsightly things that aren't so neighborly going on in that little sector, and we're definitely keeping an eye on it. I attended the Development Authority meeting, and Mr. Fransen, I know we had a lot of publicity for the OmniTrax situation, and Mr. Fransen came to our meeting and gave us an update. He said, quote, "Everything is working out great between the Potomac Eagle and OmniTrax." So, I hope that puts a lot of hard feelings to rest, and they definitely are working together and doing track improvements, et cetera. So, it's going to be a good thing for community. He also said that they did pass their passenger numbers from last year. They had forty-two thousand passenger this year. They thought that they were going to be on pace to not surpass their previous numbers, but they had a great month in December, and everything's going great. We got our ESA III Clean Bill of Health for the Hampshire Memorial Hospital, and finally washing our hands of that, gentlemen. And we're coming to a clean ending there. And we, other than that, we just had some, we had bylaw adjustment for Aquabank is requesting to put their docks at the positioning. They can't put their docks on the back or on a certain part of the building because it's in the floodplain. So, we're trying to work out a deal with them where they can still have their building, but make some slight alterations as long as it's okay with the board. So, we're in talks about what we're going to do for the positioning of their docks. And if they are in an unsightly place, we want them to agree to a green space or something of that sort to re-beautify the view shed they are coming in. So, other than that, no major developments. And I will move on to the Criminal Justice Board meeting. We had a criminal, South Branch Valley Day Report Criminal Justice Board meeting. The, we're implementing the DVIP program, which is a domestic violence program, and we've had it vetted by the judges. It's a thirty-two-week program with, you know, we've already have seven referrals already. Just Darren Taylor just keeps doing an amazing job of bearing old hatchets and working hard to get new referrals to keep this outfit, you know, well-funded and not totally relying on county commissions and grants. And the sustainability is as high as it's ever been. We have, and also, in doing that, down in Charleston, they see the sustainability, and they're willing to give you more money in grants. If they see you're too reliant on grants and you don't have your own sustainability, if they ever need to pull those grants, you know, they want to know that you can sustain. And so anyways, we got a ninety percent increase in our cost app grant because of that. And just, I could go on and on. Darren's always working to better the funding, and we have a new recovery coach, and he worked out a deal to get his training paid for. Hampshire County Commission is still owed about thirty thousand dollars, gentlemen. And personally, I think that that's a good threshold to keep them at, no more. And that gives them a small safety net until their grants come in. But other than that, we'll be a little long-winded today, gentlemen. Sure, you gentlemen did see Terry Lively retired. Bob, I know you knew that.
He passed away.
Oh, he did? Jesus. Apologize. Well, if it's all right.
I smiled about it, yeah, he retired effective the thirty-first, I think, of October, and he, my last he's been, he passed away maybe three weeks ago or so. Wasn't long after he retired.
Well, if it's okay with you, gentlemen. Bob, you care if I read this resolution for Terry?
There you go, sure.
Commissioner? This is from the West Virginia Region Eight Economic Developments, which includes our county. And I haven't had the pleasure of working with Terry quite as long as you, gentlemen, but always answered my phone calls, always. If he couldn't solve the problem, he always directed me to the place in a person who could. And he's got his mark on Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, Mineral, Pendleton Counties forever for all the projects he's helped. And I'll read this resolution to the honor and pay tribute to Terry Lively. Whereas Terry Allen Lively has honorably served the citizens of Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, Mineral, and Pendleton Counties as Director of the West Virginia Region Eight Planning and Development Council. Whereas Mr. Lively has provided distinguished leadership for Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, Mineral, and Pendleton Counties in the state of West Virginia. Whereas Mr. Lively has shared his vision of a more prosperous Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, Mineral, and Pendleton Counties with all residents, businesses, and has worked hard to make that vision a reality. And whereas Mr. Lively's commitment to creating better Grant, Hampshire, Hardy, Mineral, and Pendleton Counties has served as an inspiration to the economic development of all Region Eight counties. Whereas Mr. Lively has literally touched the lives of all Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, Mineral, and Pendleton Counties in such manner as to encourage each of us to raise our level of expectation of ourselves. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Economic Developments and Region Eight team do hereby publicly recognize, honor, and pay tribute to Terry Lively for his dedication and leadership to Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, Mineral, and Pendleton Counties in the state of West Virginia. And furthermore, the Grant, Hardy, Hampshire, Mineral, and Pendleton Counties express its gratitude for Mr. Lively's endless commitment and his many efforts to benefit all Region Eight counties adopted that twelfth day of December, 2023. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Terry Lively. Moving on, Commissioner Agnager, do you have a report today?
I do. I do. Just a couple of quick things. I believe at our last meeting there before Christmas, I had spoken that I would be meeting with Clark Barnes on just an informational meeting about the possible windmill project. Any folks that have been keeping up with that, I guess Winchester Star had, I didn't see it myself, but a few folks told me they had an article about it. So, anyway, I was not able to meet with them. They called and asked to reschedule that meeting, possibly later this month or early in February. So, I have not forgotten about that, and I had planned on meeting them. It was right there before Christmas, and I guess maybe they had too many folks on vacation or something, but they asked me to reschedule that. So, I will stick with that and get that scheduled here later this month or early in February. Parks and Rec met, and this time of year, they had a lot going on. The lights, again, very successful, a lot of positive feedback from the community on the lights. Mr. C. is officially retired now. He worked through the end of the year and a little over eleven years, I believe, at the Parks and Rec. And they are congratulating him on his retirement, obviously, but sad to see him go. And just a couple of quick things, we did have a little recognition party for him there. But before he took over Parks and Rec, we had four programs, county programs for youth slash adults. You know, just across the county, we had four programs to participate in. We now have sixteen different things that people can do through the Parks and Rec every year. We, and you know, this goes to the board as well as Mr. C., just making this recognition since he retired. But, you know, he gave a lot of credit to his board, and I do as well, because they are an active board. They're a board that, they always have a good attendance there. And Parks and Rec is, you know, the Commissioners, all three of us serve on different boards. And some boards, you know, it's just kind of automatic. But Parks and Rec is something you can either just be kind of a by-the-way-side board, or you can be aggressive. And I'm very proud of that board. They are, they definitely take the aggressive route, you know. In the last few years here, they built a new conference center up there, which is, you know, a big thing for the youth in the county. You know, they've worked with volunteers on ball fields, different ball fields. It's, they're just very active, and I just want to commend them and Mr. C. for his years there with them. Other than that, gentlemen, I didn't have, it was pretty quiet there since we met on the nineteenth of December, obviously, with the holidays and stuff. Other than that, pretty quiet. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, Commissioner, I agree. Mr. C., I would say is one of the best directors we've had. Commissioner Hott?
Okay, I really don't have a whole lot. I was under the weather there for a few days. I didn't attend the Farm and Land Protection nor the HCSA meeting. So, I really don't have anything to report on, to be honest. I had, I did have some phone calls prior to getting ill there for a few days, and it was concerning the Springfield EMS. We can maybe discuss that a little later, but that's basically all I have to report.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Clerk, you had a calendar recommendation and committee assignments?
I do, and I did not distribute that to you. I emailed it, but I did have a word coming to you this morning. I realized that giving you a different list than that. So, if you want to kind of go month by month, I've got my calendar here to see how that suits. We set up a normal schedule for January with the second and twenty-third, the second and fourth Tuesdays. First meeting at nine o'clock, second at six, and that pattern holds down through March until we get to April. And in April, the third Tuesday is mandated by law that we meet to lay the levy. And so that falls on the sixteenth of April. And normally, you know, to put another meeting in on the second Tuesday, plus that one, I thought it would be better to go ahead and move it down to the thirtieth because of what's coming behind it. So, I'd ask that if we could, schedule both of those meetings to begin at nine AM. Because May one, the next day after the thirtieth, early voting starts. And of course, this room's heavily involved in that, and we also have the Cape and Ridge satellite location this year. So, I'll be spread a little thin right in there. So, if we could set that for two AM meetings for the month of April, I'd really appreciate it, and I think it'd be beneficial. Primary Election Day will be May fourteenth, rather, that's the second Tuesday. So, that automatically means we have Canvas on the following Monday, barring any holidays, and we don't. So, you will meet as Board of Canvas on the twentieth. And then I scheduled us a meeting for May twenty-eighth, which follows Memorial Day, but that's our normal day. And I did set that one for an evening meeting, again, pending your approval. This is just suggestions, and let's see what you think. June, the eleventh and twenty-fifth are our normal meeting dates, so we go back to our morning-evening schedule there. And then in July, it had been discussed perhaps not to have the second meeting in July because that falls in Fair Week. And I believe, I'm not really sure what week the fair is scheduled, but I presume it's the twenty-first through twenty-sixth. So, that would just mean the one meeting date in July, nine AM on the ninth. And of course, you guys can schedule special meetings anytime. That's easily done. We go back to August and September where we have our normal pattern again. And then in October, we're running right up against the general election. So, again, I ask that we use our morning meeting times on the twenty-second because early voting starts on the twenty-third, the morning after. So, early voting starts there, runs for ten days, including the two Saturdays, and stops on the ninth, I'm sorry, the second. And Election Day, our Election Day will be November fifth, Tuesday the fifth. We would normally, like I said earlier, Canvas on the Monday following, but the Monday following is Veterans Day. So, that pushes us to Tuesday the twelfth as our Canvas date. And then I went ahead and, we often only have one regular meeting in November, so I set that for the nineteenth, and that would put us right on track. Thanksgiving's on the twenty-eighth this year, gets us back to a, Thanksgiving fell early in twenty-three. So, we did have two meetings in November this year. And then moving to December, up to you guys what you think. But I wrote down the second Tuesday would be the tenth, and then tentatively set the Christmas luncheon for the thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth. Christmas will fall on Wednesday next year. We have a leap year coming up, or this will be a leap year. And so that's what I had there.
The only question I had, Eric, was does the West Virginia code dictate a duration after the general election until the Canvas would have to be done? And the only reason we moved it from Monday is because of the holiday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the code states that it will be the Monday following the Election Day.
Unless there's a holiday.
Okay.
And Commissioner Hott, the July second meeting, that's what we did this year.
Yeah.
Brian's has several animals, and it was actually a lot of complaining from the public that, you know, well, I've received a few, I should say, that we had a meeting during Fair Week and they couldn't be here. So, that was the only other one.
I'm fine. Yeah, I'm fine. If you guys are fine, I'll move that we adopt the Hampshire County Commission calendar here for 2024.
I second that motion.
I have a motion to approve the County Commission calendar as presented and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye.
All right, gentlemen. At the bottom of the page, I did put down the Board of Equalization Review dates, and I will post them in a week or so. We discussed them and kind of agreed to them by acclamation. But I noticed that on the February thirteenth was one of the dates that Ms. Wagner had suggested. That's a regular commission meeting date. So, I anticipate it might be good if we move that to eleven AM for the Board of Equalization Review. You have your meeting on time, and then Board of Equalization Review while you're here, you know, could be addressed. And then we still, we have us doing the signee dial on the twentieth. And I get that to the paper to be published for two weeks prior to Board of Equalization Review meeting, and all that'll be posted and set. So, that's agreeable.
Any further discussion, gentlemen? Looks good. Did you have any thing else for us, Clerk? I know you had a little long-winded on you.
No, no, you're fine. I put down the Commission Committee assignments, just as much an opportunity for me to make sure I've got them right as anything. I know that you guys are. I know that you guys are, you know what you're doing, but.
The only thing that I requested was if this is still agreeable, Commissioner Agneger is that we, he would take over the Committee on Aging if I took the president's seat. Is that something you're still agreeable to, sir?
Yeah, I can do that. I'm fine with that.
I really appreciate that. Commissioner Hott, did you have any discussion on committees?
No, I'm also on the nine-one committee, which is not on there, but I just wrote it down. I'm okay with it for now.
So, I'll make sure that's added. Thank you. Okay, great. I appreciate you giving me the chance to get that caught up and I usually catch these things from the minutes in our meetings and go ahead and adjust the, my lists appropriately, but that doesn't always happen, so.
Do we need a motion for that, Clerk, to approve the committees?
It's up to you guys.
I'll move that we approve the committee appointments.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the committee assignments as presented with respect to the Committee on Aging going to Commissioner Agneger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Just make sure you change it at the top of the page here to twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. We'll do it. Well, I put my updates at the bottom, so.
Yeah, but it's only updated on twenty twenty-three.
Correct, last year.
After you do twenty twenty-four, second.
But I shall.
We have any other correspondence or requests, Mr. Clerk?
No, I'm making a copy of the draft of the Cape and Bridge Comprehensive Plan, which is for your review. It's kind of extensive, so it's going to take a little time for the copy here, it'll take care of. But I'll have that for you before we leave.
What's their date, Clerk, that they need to?
In February, and I don't recall precisely, but they send that out for y'all's review and feedback. It's a draft. They're just getting it together for their.
Yeah, because I know already that the county plan, we have to, we sign off and then we, I mean, the Planning Commission does it, but we approve it. Does the municipality, is the same?
No.
I don't know either. I don't think it is, but I didn't. As a matter of fact, this is the first time we've ever got.
I was thinking, I'd not seen it.
We've never got anything from Romney. I don't even know if Romney's got the con plan, do you know?
Yeah, they do. They do. I remember them working on that.
And we probably don't have to sign off on these municipalities, but.
It may just be a courtesy thing.
Yeah, but they should be sort of in compliance with what the counties is, you know.
They need to be, yeah.
Yeah, I would think. I, yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I think maybe a good idea, gentlemen, would being that our planning commission, most of the planning commissioners on there just went through updating the comprehensive plan for the county about three years ago. The only person that we've lost is Sandra Hunt, but they're pretty well-versed in the process and maybe we could have them look at it first?
I'd be fine with me, yeah, okay.
Well, I'll make sure that you get a copy.
Okay.
Distribution.
Sounds good. Sounds good to me. And then we can take a final look at it, see if they have any concerns, being they're well-versed in that.
I'll practice that. I had no other topic, except we do have one invoice and that is something that you kind of pushed off sometime back. That's the Bill Bailey insurance premium due for the Springfield Volunteer Area Rescue Squad.
Can I see that, Eric?
Depending on the.
Thank you.
Activity of the squad.
I actually did speak with Donna last night, gentlemen, because I didn't know whether or not you'd bring this up or want it on a future agenda. Now, I haven't seen the papers, but I believe they had thirty calls and they responded to eleven or twelve of them. So, and then, of course, we don't have the tallies for January, but being that it's not on the agenda, Commissioner, is that?
Well, the invoice, I mean, it's an invoice for.
Yeah, down here, down here.
I think it needs to be paid. I think it's.
Yeah, here's. It's only forty-one percent.
Yeah, forty-one percent, that's your response rate.
And November started.
And this, this is paid yearly, Mr. Clerk?
Quarterly, sir.
Quarterly. So, let's see here. So, about eight hundred and eighty-one dollars a month, gentlemen. Let's just take the eleven calls they had. That's eighty dollars a call. So, let's take all of last year at one point three-three million dollars and let's divide that by thirty-five hundred calls that our ambulance took. That's three hundred and eighty dollars a call. The one thing I cannot defend is the unprofessionalism and these reports that I see in my email. So, I can talk until the cows come home about the money and I'm sure that that's, you know, it's not a completely comprehensive argument. It's pretty basic numbers there and there's a lot more that goes into it and I know that. But whatever you, gentlemen, decide.
Well, you know, Mr. President, we, in October, we made the motion and moved and the commission approved that if they didn't get the response rate up to fifty percent by December thirty-first, that we would, we wouldn't pay their insurance. And as far as I'm concerned, that's what we should do. They're only up to, they was up to forty-one percent, I think, in December and also, you know, I've noticed, and like you, I've got a lot of reports. I've talked to the state level numerous times in the last two or three weeks about the problem we're having there. And I'm of the opinion that we don't pay their insurance and I'll make that as a motion that we don't, that we don't pay the insurance for the EMS forty-two.
Commissioner, I hope before you vote, you take a consideration to that, the burden that we have to pay for all this. And regardless of eleven calls, eight calls, fifteen calls, it's nowhere near three hundred and eighty dollars a call. At the end of the day, it'll be you and I that'll be here in the long run dealing with paying for this and I will not raise the fee. I won't be a part of it. You can clearly see that they're trying. I hope you give some consideration to that.
Well, first, I'll second the motion so that we can vote on it in a little bit, but I want to say a few things and because I've been, been involved in this ambulance problem that the county's faced for seven years now. Commissioner Hott's been involved in it for probably, you know, it was a problem prior to that for probably, you know, it's been an ongoing problem. We're not specifically speaking to Springfield on the problem, but, you know, when the commissioners decided to do a fee here five, six years ago, we had exhausted the efforts of the general fund and, you know, there was plenty of warning, plenty of trying to work through this. And the bottom line is, is we need volunteers. And your statement on the insurance there, that's exclusively an insurance number. You know, I do have agreements and lease agreements and when Springfield became incorporated on some of the different things and over the years, you know, the taxpayer, because when I say county and I gotta make that very clear, whenever we're talking about the ambulance, the county ambulance, it's the taxpayer ambulance. And, you know, effort was made even before I was commissioner to, to work with the, you know, all the different volunteer squads. I know specifically Commissioner Hott, before I was commissioner, because I would come in and listen to some meetings and, you know, you know, they asked for numbers and, you know, some of these squads just basically told us, you know, wasn't, or told them it wasn't any of their business, you know, so, but yet they want the taxpayer to continue to support them through us because we have to make the decision. So, I have a problem with that, you know, and to be a volunteer, you know, when I, I just looked up the definition of, of, you know, committee, community volunteer, you know, and I looked up more than one definition because you get, you know, you get the one point of view of it, but one common denominator was, is that you, is that you openly do stuff for no reward, for no personal gain. And especially with some of the unprofessionalism we've seen here recently, more than, more than in the past, and it's happened in the past too, I kind of feel like, you know, a true volunteer could, could work anywhere in the county. A true volunteer could, you know, I know a lot of people in Hampshire County go on vacation to Ocean City. Well, you can stop in there and they have a city slash volunteer unit that works very good. And we could do that kind of thing, but we need volunteers. We need, we're not talking four or five. We need fifty or a hundred that could give a weekend or two a year and we could, we could put them within the county and we could be the most efficient and effective ambulance in the state. And we already are with the new county. You know, again, we had, we had neighboring counties to the west of us asking how we did this, how we, so, and to clear something else, the paper, and the paper's been very unfair to me and Commissioner Hott in this from day one. And I'll blame that on Sydney. She thinks differently than we do about this. She has never brought out the good things that's happened. She's given inaccurate numbers. She's gave her opinion as fact, very poor reporting, very, and I just, I don't tolerate lies. But anyway, to get back to it, the fee was coming and the paper has never made this clear. The fee was coming whether we had a, a paid units or whether we had volunteers because the commission could no longer sustain what they were sustaining. So, the fee was coming either way. What the commissioners at the time had to do was decide whether we wanted a paid process that we, as the people that had to ask for the money and divvy it out, whether we wanted to go that route or whether we wanted to give it to the volunteer squads who, let me remind you, some of them wouldn't even show us their numbers. So, you know, I, on top of that, with the unprofessionalism and the fact that, you know, Springfield Squad in particular can't get volunteers because they themselves can't get along, you know, at this point, in the eighty dollars versus three thirty, I'd have to have a lot more numbers there, Commissioner Cannon, to, to even come close to agreeing with that, you know, their inability that belongs to the county, that they don't follow the rules of their agreement. And I'll, here's in a recorded agreement that the Springfield Rescue Squad has with the state. It's recorded at the state and with the county. And it says, I'm just going to give one example here, and this is one that affected me, so I'll just, I'll just, because I don't hide anything. I'll just come out and show, but it says, "Shall not participate or intervene in including the public or distribution of statements, any political campaign on behalf of any candidate for public office." We all know that Springfield didn't approve of me, or Springfield Rescue Squad didn't approve of me as a candidate, but they broke their agreement there, folks. They Facebooked my opponent and in support in front of the ambulance, in the ambulance building that belongs to the county and put a sign in the front yard. So, you know, that's just an example, you know. There's, there's other examples. The recent unprofessionalism is breaking, is breaking their agreement. And I could go on, but I, you know, I'm going to second it and I got to agree with Commissioner Hott. I'm going to do what's most effective for a growing county and, you know, I support, I support the paid guys and I'll support a volunteer squad that can do what they need to do to help the county, but I won't support little cliques that can't get along with the rest, wants to cuss the rest and in front of patients. I'm not, this commissioner's not going to support that. You can make it look cheaper and volunteerism is way cheaper, but we don't have it. We have a, in this case, we have a small clique that wants to do things their way and constantly bash the way the county does things and I'm not going to be a part of it. So, that's my second.
I have a motion and a second to not pay the Bill Bailey insurance invoice as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying no. No. Motion passed two to one. And I will add that that's been very conservative to not even consider the million-dollar building in those numbers. That's just budgetary, but as I said in preface, you know, it seemed to be a financial debate in the beginning, which I've soon realized, and I think we can all agree and you just agreed, that, you know, it is cheaper and that was my point. I don't think any of us can agree with the unprofessionalism, so I have no, I have no rebuttal to that. I just, I, gentlemen, we, by law, we have to provide this service and this is a very, very cheap, much cheaper way of doing it and we're not going to raise the fee. I'm not at least, or going to be a part of it and it's just a major concern and I think we're right near the middle. I mean, I just, I can't believe, I can't live in a world where these two institutions can work together, you know. It's just absolutely pathetic. I feel like my hands are tied behind my back and they're telling me to solve a problem. Anyways, moving on, gentlemen.
If I could just say one more thing, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
When I was on the HCSA board and when we had to step in down at Cape and Bridge because they had come to a point where they could almost not respond at all, our director at the time, not the one we have now, but our director at the time, I had instructed him to look into whether volunteers could work for the county. And that is very possible, as I gave the example of Ocean City. And that's another state and states differ, but it's, it's possible here. And again, just to let the people know my thinking, you know, as a taxpayer, it's, it's getting the best for your money for the county and we don't need these, these separate little cliques of people that want to do it their same way. What we need is volunteers. And, you know, I think there was an editorial or something that maybe spoke to me as a commissioner, let's prove, please do, you know, please prove me wrong, you know, come up with fifty volunteers that we can spread out among the county. But that is not something us three can do. That, that is something the people need to do. And as a commissioner, right now, the way I see it. And as a Commissioner, right now, the way I see it, people would rather pay $100 than do the training and dedicate some time over a course of the year to be a volunteer so that we don't end up at some point having to hire more paid. But you can't base this argument off a, a world of euphoria, because there aren't, there's just very few of them. And those few, for the most part, are dedicated folks, and I commend them, and I've commended them before. But as a Commissioner sitting here, I've got to come up with more than that. And, you know, we've been speaking to this for over 10 years now, and the volunteerism has, if anything, dwindled. So I just, there's so much more to this, and I'd be glad to speak to anybody that wants to really dive into the details, because there's, there's so much more to this than has ever been reported by our paper.
Mr. Hott? Do you have anything?
Well, you know, guys, it's, it's, this, these decisions are not easy, and they, they're decisions that we have to make. And in my conversations in the last couple of weeks with, with people at the state level, with our regional medical director, Dr., well, I didn't talk to Dr. Best. However, Dr. Best informed our director that it was up to the county commission to make these, to make these decisions, and so did the state. The state was very, they felt that these, these allegations that we had here in the last month or so, which was very unprofessional of some of the people with, with the, with the Springfield Squad, the state got involved in that, but they said at the end of the day that it was up to the county commission to, to make the ultimate decisions. And having informed me of that, at this time, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we notify our 9-1-1 director that Springfield EMS 42 be removed from our call list, and so that way they won't be, they won't be notified. So that's, that's my motion.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to remove Springfield EMS. Is that even legal, gentlemen? I mean, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying no. No. Motion passed two to one. Moving on. Any invoices, Mr. Clerk? If there's nothing else, gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.